The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and the City Council. This is a meeting that comes together to ratify items previously dealt with by the City Council and the Board of Finance, so you'll hear a lot of yeses tonight. And at 7 o'clock, we will begin our regular meeting of the City Council. Before we begin our agenda, I'd like to ask those in attendance to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the members of the joint meeting, please introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Nick Jones, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Scott Rosado, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Kate Carrier, Board of Finance.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on August 13th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections needed of the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent calendar, which includes items 2A through P. Is there anything that any member of the joint meeting would like to have removed from the consent calendar for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar 2A through P?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is to approve transfers totaling $1,292,723 within the general fund to close out the fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4 is to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2018-2019 to fiscal year 2019-2020 totaling $4,421,821 within the general fund.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5 is to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2018-19 to fiscal year 2019-20 totaling $6,414 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6 is to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2018-19 to fiscal year 2019-20 totaling $211,654 within the Sewer Operating and Assessment Fund.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2018-2019 to fiscal year 2019-2020 totaling $25,314 within the Solid Waste Disposal Fund.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, to transfer $40,000 from the Fire Department's operating budget to operating transfers out capital projects.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, to make an additional appropriation of $40,000 within the capital projects fund for Station 3 improvements.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, to transfer $46,150 within the Public Works Fleet operating budget.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, to transfer $660,000 from the general fund contingency account to the Board of Education operating budget for cost overruns as of June 30th, 2019.
So moved, second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, to transfer $100,000 from the general fund contingency account to the School Lunch Fund operating budget for cost overruns as of June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is to approve the resolution increasing the appropriation for the Public Works Garage Renovations Phase 2 project by $20,000 for an aggregate appropriation of $350,000 and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
I think it's a resolution.
It is. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we will have a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, the motion is approved. Item 14 is to approve the resolution increasing the authorization of the issuance of bonds or notes for the Public Works Garage...oh wait, I already did that, what are we?
Nope, that's correct. You're correct.
Okay. To approve the resolution increasing the authorization of the issuance of bonds or notes for the Public Works Garage renovation Phase 2 project by $20,000 for an aggregate borrowing authorization of $350,000 and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, the resolution is approved, the motion is passed. Item number 15 is to approve the resolution increasing the appropriation for the Stafford School Roof Project by $470,700 for an aggregate appropriation of $2514,275 and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes.
So moved.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Chair votes yes, resolution is approved. Item 16, to approve the resolution increasing the authorization of the issuance of bonds or notes for the Stafford School Roof Project by $470,700 for an aggregate borrowing authorization of $2514,275 and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, the resolution is approved. Item 17 is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller.
Good afternoon, everyone. Couple of things to report. With respect to the current year, we're only two months into the fiscal year, so there's not a lot to report at this point, but I did look at...just wanted to report on our tax collections actually are at the same collection percentage as we were last year at this time, so I think that's good, that the tax collector has been relatively very consistent over the last two years. Building permits are 20% of budget, so it's a little bit ahead where it should be. And then the only other thing I do want to touch on is investment income. I know we were very successful this past year with our investment income, and we're going to continue to monitor that this year. Right now, it's not in your report that you have in front of you. We did not yet have a chance to record the August investment income, but right now we're at 23.6% of the budget, so that's good, and I'm hoping that trend continues that we're slightly above, because if you remember, we did increase the budget projections for the 2019-20 fiscal year. Is this on? Yeah, okay. Couple of other things that I did just want to report, we are still closing out fiscal year 2019. We're hoping that we will have an estimate of surplus at that...for the next meeting, for the next Board of Finance meeting, and we'll make some recommendations of transfers of funds to the reserves that we normally do at that meeting. We're working on the audit, and the auditors will be here the end of October, so we should have pretty good numbers by the end of this month, with the exception of any accruals or anything that the auditors come up with as they do their work. The other more important thing that I do want to talk about tonight is I want to talk about a bond issue. When we had talked about last year, the CIP Strategic Planning Committee was looking at maybe doing some notes this year, we had talked about that, and I think right now the interest rates are very, very, very good. Some of the rates that some of the other cities and towns around the state that have been getting on 20-year bond issues is in the 1.9 to 2.06 range for 20-year bonds. So, we have scheduled a CIP Strategic Planning Committee meeting for this Monday, September 16th. I have asked our financial advisor to put together some projections on some bond issues, different levels of a bond issue, and how we can structure it. As you know, in 2023, we will have a decline in our debt service, so we want to try and structure it and try and get to that point. And there's different ways that we can do that, so right now that is the goal. Just to give you some numbers, right now the city has about $40.5 million of net authorized unissued bonds out there. Approximately $20 million of that is for the Memorial Boulevard School. We do have 1.3 million that we just...you purchased a fire truck, you have 4.1 million for the pool, and then there is the 20 million out there for the Memorial Boulevard School. So I think, working with our financial advisor and our bond counsel, we'll be able to come up with a way that we can do a bond issue. This...actually, we'll be coming up very quickly, because you want to move quick when the rates are this good. I will say, though, that we will watch the market, and we will have time that if things do start...do look like the rates are going up, we can actually take a step back and hold off. So I just wanted to report on that, if anybody has any questions on that, I do think it's something that we should really look at, because we do have that debt out there to be issued, and I think if there's a way we can do it now and take advantage of these low rates, it makes sense. Any questions?
Councilman Proleski.
Diane, what was the...remind us, what was the interest rate we put in the projections for the bond issue?
I believe I used about 3...it was over 3%.
So the current rates are looking favorable compared to projection?
Yes. And I did...I just started looking at the numbers that the financial advisor had put together, and he actually was a little conservative, he's using 2.5%. And like I said, I know some cities just issued it just 2% and under, so keep our fingers crossed.
And I think they're projecting some short-term volatility in the near term, but...
So, but we'll keep a look on it, keep our eye on it. I believe I'm going to see if I can schedule the financial advisor to be either at the CIP Strategic Planning Committee meeting, or maybe at the next Board of Finance meeting.
That's good.
I think it would be good to have him make a presentation on it as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council? There's a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will commence the City Council monthly meeting in approximately two minutes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September City Council meeting. Before we introduce ourselves, I'd like to ask Chief Kalakowski of the Fire Department and Chief Gould from the Police Department to step forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in remembrance of the 9/11 tragedy that we're all going to be remembering tomorrow. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chiefs. Would members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my far left?
Scott Rosado.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. Tonight, for our moment of reflection, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Phil Vanilla, Wilmore Legassi, Bernard Grobowski, and Harry Fiorillo, all who've died in the last month since our last City Council meeting, and all who've served the city in various capacities over the last 50 years. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular City Council meeting on August 13th, 2019, the special meeting on July 22nd, 2019, and the public hearing that was held on August 13th, 2019.
Move for approval?
Second.
Move for approval, and second has been made for all three sets of minutes. Are there any clarifications and corrections that have been seen by the members of the City Council? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is public participation. The first item that we do every month is a nonprofit spotlight, so that members of the community can become familiar with all of the wonderful nonprofits that Bristol benefits from having. Tonight's special guest is Susan Siddecky from the Main Street Community Foundation. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you. All right, I'm using a script, so I'll stick to my two minutes that I'm told I need to have, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to share with you some important information about the Main Street Community Foundation. The one thing that I want you to remember is that your local community foundation is the place you want to go to leave your legacy. So why is that important? Well, that's important because since 1995, Main Street has been building endowment funds to ensure a permanent resource of funding, that that would be available for the communities of Bristol, Burlington, Plainville, Plymouth, Southington, and Wiltwick, noting that Bristol is the largest community that we serve. Almost 25 years later, with 240 named endowment funds and over $45 million in stewarded assets, the Main Street Community Foundation has provided $18.5 million in grants and scholarships to uplift our communities, our nonprofits, and the residents of Bristol and surrounding communities. We are a tax-exempt nonprofit, 501(c)(3), started by private citizens but supported by the public, everyone in fact through donations to charitable interests important to each donor. This can be done with donations to any one of the 240 funds that I mentioned, or to the community foundation, to support the many leadership initiatives that we are currently engaged with. As an anchor institution in Bristol, we steward assets in perpetuity and carry out each donor's intent even when the community's needs and organizations change. We are proud to be confirmed in compliance with the national standards for U.S. community foundations, and we have held that distinct accreditation since the program began. If you are interested in setting up a fund to benefit your favorite nonprofit or field of interest like education, arts and culture, human services, animal welfare, environmental conservation, or any other important charitable field, contact us. Our office is located in Bristol, and you can visit us online at mainstreetfoundation.org. The community foundation is governed by a volunteer board of directors and depends on over 200 volunteers annually to carry out our mission as a steward of permanent assets, responsible grant maker, community leader, and convener. So again, contact us to learn more about how you can help make a difference in your local community, we have many volunteer opportunities. Any questions?
I want to thank you for taking two hours this morning to help us with the Bristol Cares Committee and helping to realign our social safety net, because I think it's really important, and having you in the room as a funder was critical to that success, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome, my pleasure, and on behalf of the Main Street Community Foundation, it's my pleasure to share with you information.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Next, under public participation, we have a group of neighbors here from the East Road area. Hands up if you're from East Road. Wow, okay. I believe Raymond Wilson is coming to the podium to discuss some traffic issues on East Road.
Good evening, Council and Mayor and Chief Gould. My name's Raymond Wilson, I'm a lifelong resident of Bristol. I've been watching this town grow and burst through the last 59 years. Good things have happened here, but one of the things that has happened here is that we brought 72 through the heart of our city. With that has brought monumental traffic issues. I'm not here to complain, I think everybody here knows about them. My point is, I need some relief. I'm gonna...I'm here to work with my neighbors, and if my neighbors could all stand up, I'd really appreciate it, just so you could see that we do care about our community. We have women, children, elderly, people racing through our neighborhoods at ungodly speeds, total disregard for our community. I believe most of the people that do this are just running through our town, because the people that live here care. You know, it's a throughway for Wiltwick, Waterbury, Watertown, that's our route, up Ridge Road, Briar Road, East Road, Willis Street, South Street. Unmanageable, unmanageable. The other route, which goes through Thomaston, Plymouth, Terrigo, we all know the issues. What I would like to do is, if possible, set up a community action committee along with my District 2 councilman, Chief Gould, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mike Duval is our traffic enforcer. We need to come together as a community. It is outrageous what's going on in my town, and I really can't take it anymore. I get my own problems with people coming up my street, I'm gonna get arrested, I'm gonna get hurt, somebody else is gonna get hurt, but it's a travesty is what's going on in this town. So, I know a few years ago, we did a traffic study here. I would love to know the results, the volume of cars, that machine we put out there, does it tell us how many speeders are on that road? Because I can tell you, it's every other car. And my biggest problem is lack of enforcement. I know there's issues, monetary issues, we all go through that as a community, I totally understand that. I don't understand, and maybe somebody could explain this to me, how the city of Bristol doesn't get surcharges on tickets that are issued in our town, so we can make this a moneymaker? I don't understand it, maybe people know, and I don't want to take everybody's time to get these questions tonight, but I need a commitment out of my councilmembers tonight that we are going to set up this action community plan, and we are going to meet monthly until we get a resolution that is something that is going to fix our problem, because I don't want to go backwards, everybody here can tell a war story of what happened in front of their house, but we need to move forward. We can't go back, and we can't do status quo, because status quo is unacceptable. It's a total disregard for public safety, and when something seriously happens to someone in my neighborhood, I'm gonna be very upset. And I don't want it to come to that, but I think everybody here that's in this room feels the same way I feel. So, I don't know what else to say, I don't know what to say, Mayor, but it's ridiculous what happens here from 6:00 in the morning until 7:30, and from 4:30 in the afternoon until 6:00 o'clock. I run those routes every day, and I know it's resources, but I can't find anybody enforcing the laws in this town during those hours. And I challenge any of you to find it. So, how we come up with a resolution, I don't know, but I need a commitment out of this room tonight that we are going to work on this problem. And I don't know how to go about that, so I would like a response from someone, anyone.
So, basically, I wish that you were the only neighborhood that we had to deal with on this issue. It has been an epidemic, and it's one that the Police Commission and the Traffic Division, as well as all of us from a constituent basis, have been fielding calls, emails similar to yours. So you are right in that it is a community action plan worthy item. There needs to be a lot of people that come to the table on this, and our Traffic Division, I think, was asked...the chief...I can't see through you. I know that you probably haven't had a lot of time to look up what's been done to date, but if you have, I think it would be beneficial for everyone in one room to hear even just a short summary, and then I thought, as a starting point, if you were so inclined with your neighbors, since we're all in one place right now, that you could adjourn to the executive room and maybe exchange emails, or have the chief hear specifically some of the items that have occurred on your street, so that there could be more of a understanding as we start to build what that plan is. If not, we can schedule that at another time, our Police Commission meets next Tuesday, and we will take that up...will be a referral from here tonight to the Police Commission, and the issue will go from there. But I don't know if the chief has anything initially...
I don't know, the chief can share with us. One thing I'd like to know is what are the resources that are going on during these hours that this goes on? Anyway, chief, go ahead, take the table and...
Thank you for your concern, yep, I appreciate you being here. First and foremost, we...anytime we have some type of complaint or traffic concern like this, we work and deploy our resources based on results and statistical data. So one of the things that we'll do out there is we will put traffic counters out in that area, and what that will do is it will give us an idea of how much traffic is flowing on that road. I'd have to get with you all at some point, we'll meet, because East Road's a long road, and we need to figure out where the hotspots are to deploy those counters out there. It will tell us, as much data as we need, it will tell us average speeds, it will tell us the fastest speed, it will tell us...we go off of what's called the 85th percentile, that's the magic number for us, and that's what 85% of the vehicles traveling, that, what their speed is at, we gauge that. We have conducted studies in the past out there, we were out there a couple times in 2017, we were out in the area of East and Brer, and we've also had some other studies at East and Willis. It definitely is time for us to go back out there and reassess what's going on out there, and of course, I can't do that without having that data in front of me. But just to give you an idea, I did have an opportunity to look up some stats, and in May of 2017, we went out there, and we were in the area of Brer and East Road, we did a 24-hour analysis. We found northbound lane had approximately 2,061 vehicles traveling on it, southbound had 1,00684. At that time, the average speed was 31 miles per hour, it is posted for 30, and the 85th percentile speed for northbound lane was 34 miles, .92 miles per hour, and 39.93. We went back out there, so what we're looking at there is, we found that it was an average of 31 miles per hour in a 30 mile per hour zone, and 85% of the traffic traveling at or below 34.92 miles per hour. We went out there back in November, and we ran another study on East Road. We did this through November 21st, through November 22nd, and we found that that time the average speed for all classified vehicles was 24 miles per hour, 85th percentile was 29.62 miles per hour. That was for the eastbound lane. And I'm sorry here, we do have...we separate the...when we do in this detail, we...the westbound lane, we had 1,785 vehicles, and we found that the average speed was 25 miles per hour, and our 85th percentile was 29.95 miles per hour. So at that time, we do acknowledge that there is people that speed on our roadways, but we did not see a significant speed factor to consider it a dangerous intersection. We also did crash analysis and stuff. Again, that was a few years ago, so what we'll do this time is we'll go back out there, we will review our crash data, because that's what we go off of as well, what type of accidents we had out there, what was the causal factors and the contributing factors to those accidents, so we'll do a complete analysis. We have thousands of roads, hundreds of roads in Bristol, and we're trying to get out there, and we are enforcing... and we are enforcing out there, we do have a Traffic Division, full-time Traffic Division out there enforcing. But I look forward to working with the residents of East Road to to come up with an analysis and respond appropriately.
I think your point about where those hot points are, is an important one, especially with the new configuration coming off of 69 entering that neighborhood.
Yep.
I've heard a lot of complaints up there. I don't know if Mr. Maniscalco is here, but I know that...
I've spoken.
His area is a hot one, and that's toward there. Did you want to say something?
You know, Your Honor, I gave Mr. Wilson my card, and Mr. Wilson, you should know that you're in a second district, and Peter Kelly and I oftentimes go to people's living rooms, talk to neighbors, and we're willing to do that, if you want to do that monthly meeting. The second thing is, our job is to be the liaison between concerned citizens and city resources, so we'll be more than happy to be the liaison to make sure this thing keeps moving forward. And I give him my card, so after you talk to the chief, call me, and we'll we'll work something out for a community meeting.
Is there interest, Mr. Wilson, for you and your neighbors to have a quick sidebar conversation with Chief Gould?
That'd be interesting.
Okay, okay. All right, so, I think contact's been established, this will be referred to the Police Commission for Tuesday, you're pulling data, you're going to be in contact with your councilman, and we will continue the conversation. There was another neighbor that had signed up, I don't know if that is the Strong's, do they still want to speak? Okay, all right, thank you so much. All right, thank you, Chief Gould.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll just give a moment for our East Road neighbors to go into the executive room. Executive, executive. The next portion of our agenda is a special recognition of service for Donald Gorinson, who is retiring from the Fire Commission. This doesn't happen very often, there is a very small cadre of commissioners who have achieved the level of service that Commissioner Gorinson has, and that is in excess of 40 years of service to a board. In addition to him, one of the only other people that has done so is former Fire Commissioner Hap Barnes, and also, we have two that are still serving the city of Bristol, one on the Bristol Development Authority, Commissioner Howard Schmelder, and one on the Public Works Board, Commissioner Don Padlo. It is a very elite group. So, tonight, we wanted to take a moment to thank Commissioner Gorinson, who's here with his wife and son and friends and neighbors, and actually, looks like a whole platoon, from the Fire Department, to officially say thank you. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Gorinson to come to the front of the room, and also ask Chief Kolokowski to join us. You can hold that for a minute. And as part of our gratitude, on behalf of the city, it is my pleasure to present to Commissioner Gorinson an All-Hart Award, which is representing his decades of service serving the city. Those of you who are aware, the all boards and commissions, Fire Board notwithstanding, is a volunteer commission. So, those that serve dedicate their time and energy to it, and it's all for free. The perks are that you get to come to City Hall at least once a month and have a committee meeting. In the case of Commissioner Gorinson, he's had many meetings, as also, he's been the Chair of the Apparatus Committee and the Budget Committee for many, many years. So, we don't give these out lightly, as those of you who are at this meeting often know. So, we've done it today, and we have dated it for today, for your dedication to the Bristol Board of Fire Commissioners. We're not done.
Another thing that we don't do very often is give out a piece of firefighting equipment to someone who hasn't retired from the fire service, the line fire service. Don, you have retired from the line fire service, as far as we're concerned. You've dedicated service to the citizens and the city of Bristol, and more importantly, the members of the Bristol Fire Department and the Fire Department itself. You've always had the best interests of the men and women at heart in all your decisions and all your actions, and we appreciate your dedication and all your service for these many years. The Fire Department would not be what it is today without all your assistance and all your service and dedication, and we truly appreciate it. When firefighter retires, we always let them keep their service helmet. Tonight, we're gonna present Commissioner Gorinson with a service helmet. I apologize for the generic shield, your shield has not come in yet. When it does, it'll be a gold leaf shield that says, which is for chief officers usually, and it will say Commissioner on there, Bristol Fire Department, and we will bring your helmet back to us, and we'll put it on for you.
Thank you very much.
So, the last part of the presentation is to officially convey, on behalf of the City Council, that Commissioner Gorinson will now be emeritus status, as in keeping with his years of service on the Fire Board. And I'd like to present you with a Bristol All-Hart pin, which I hope you were proudly representing all that you've done for the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I cannot promise that I'm gonna pull a Susan Sudekki and with, keep this to two minutes, but I'm gonna try. First of all, thank you very much, thanks to everyone for coming, especially you guys back there, and my family, I'd like you to meet Peg, a 35-year Bristol teacher, my son David, my sister Sandy and her husband John, from one of the Chicago suburbs of Carroll Stream, who are here tonight. And Sandy and I are fourth-generation Bristol residents. David, my son, is a fifth, so we've been around for a little while. Just a few comments, if I may. Everyone knows about my lifelong interest in the fire service, wherever our travels have taken us, in this country and beyond. And I thought it would be fitting to share just one story of the beyond, since this is the 40th anniversary week of ESPN. When we retired, that is, Peg and I and another couple that were teachers here, we agreed that when all four of us had retired, we would visit Hawaii. And of course, I made my way very quickly to the Waikiki Station, home of, in Honolulu, home of a heavy rescue, a tiller, tractor, trailer, ladder company, an engine, and a chief, and they were all in the kitchen. I just happened to be wearing a Bristol Fire Department t-shirt that day, and as I walked into the kitchen, the strapping native Hawaiian raised his arms and said, "ESPN." So, the marketing effort that is going on is very, very obvious to us all. There are a number of reasons for deciding to step down and retire from the fire, from service on the Fire Board at this time, and in the spirit of David Letterman's top 10, I'm gonna cut it back to four, and here goes. You begin to think that maybe it's time to step down, when you realize that you have worked with three generations of at least two families of firefighters, right in Bristol. And I think of the Cascone family, Captain Ernie Cascone, Engine 1, his son Todd, a lieutenant, I think at Engine 5, who might...
Five and then one.
Five and then Engine 1, and now his son Aaron, who I believe is on the tower, right? And then there's the England family, Ed England, who was Alarm Superintendent here, and his son Scott, who is the present captain of Engine 5, and his son, Ed's grandson Nathan England, and I'm not sure of his, of on Engine 1. Amazing that three generations of people that, from the same two families. You also begin to think that it may be time to step down, when you routinely vote to approve firefighter retirements a full career after you voted to hire them in the first place. Number two, you begin to think that it may be a good time to step down, when our current mayor, Ellen Zappo Sassu,'s photograph isn't even on the same line of the mayor who appointed me in the first place, Henry Witusick, in 1976. And finally, you begin to think that it may be time to step down, when you get the feeling that the public officials you run into at Price Chopper or even Stop &amp; Shop just may have mouthed the words, "term limits." All kidding aside, Peg and I try to spend the better part of four or five months in the summer at our family cottage in Agunkwit, Maine. I happen to be a member of that Fire Department and served as a call driver in the busy months of the summer, when the population swells from 1,300 to 45,000. We routinely travel back and forth between Bristol and Agunkwit, attending to the special needs of our son, and those additional travel duties for Fire Board and committee meetings can get a bit overwhelming. Hence, not a bad time. So, with appointments to the Board from 12 mayors, having worked with four chiefs and three acting chiefs, having served several terms as Chair of Personnel, Budget, and Apparatus, the time does seem right. Finally, and most sincerely, my thanks go for giving this recognition for years of service on the Fire Board. Sincere thanks to Chiefs Kolokowski, Posey, Basil, and even Paul Kelly, and acting chiefs, Steve Zaremsky, Bob Greisner, and Mark Martin, who was here tonight, thanks, Mark, and also to Joanne Barrett, because when you're Chairman of the Budget Committee, and I know the chief would agree, there's an awful lot of paperwork and redoing paperwork and so forth, and she's his administrative assistant and the Board's secretary, and does a lot of the heavy work for minute-taking at the committee level as well. You know, the city of Bristol is truly blessed in having a professional, modern, well-trained, and well-equipped Fire Department, whenever it is that you might need to call 911. It has been my great pleasure to have served alongside these uniformed men and women over many years. My profound thanks to all who have contributed to making my public service possible. Thanks very much.
I'd like to also recognize Commissioner Jandrew, who's with us, a retired captain from Bristol Fire, and former Commissioner Jay Bokar, who's in the audience as well. And you may not have seen her, but Joanne Barrett is in the back. For those of you who do need to go back to work, we'll take a quick minute to pause, and I don't know if you'd like to go out in the hallway and greet the platoon, the entire platoon, it looks like. Thank God there's no emergencies right now, somebody have the radio on? Okay. And also, I just want to take an opportunity to let the public know that tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., the Bristol Fire Department will be acknowledging the 9/11 anniversary at the Fire Bell outside, inside, at the memorial? And St. Joseph's Church will be having a 9:00 a.m. mass, and St. Gregory's is holding a 7:00 p.m. mass. All are invited to attend any of those commemorations. We'll pause for a few minutes, for people to be able to file out, so it won't disturb our audio. Oh, Commissioner Hines is here as well, former Commissioner Hines. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Well deserved.
Thanks, Dave. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, you're the one that's done this for us.
Congratulations.
Okay. We're now gonna set up for another presentation, again, kind of embracing the theme of Bristol All-Hart and the value of volunteers here in our community. I'd like to ask our Parks Superintendent, Dr. Maderos, to come forward to the podium. Okay. Do you want me to hand? Do you want me to?
You're gonna do a little overview?
Sure. Okay.
All right, good evening.
Evening.
Is this on?
Yes, it's on.
Doesn't sound like it's on. So, I'm here tonight, as everyone knows, I believe, at this point, we just, last week, opened our new mountain bike trails at Rockwell Park. The project was a seven-month-long process, and it wouldn't have been possible without some really, really great collaboration from some community volunteers who are here tonight to be recognized. But before that, just very briefly, the project really, you know, came about from Councilman Mills, working with some of the volunteers and asking the question, why don't we have a mountain bike trail system here in Bristol? From there, very quickly, in December 2018, they came to the Board of Park Commissioners to have that discussion, and really, from there, a short seven months later, we've made it happen. And I think it's really a testament to what can happen when a department and a board says, yes, we can, and works with such great synergy with both our Parks crew, our office staff, and this group of volunteers, as well as the city officials that made it possible. So, we have so many great people that were involved in this process, but it really wouldn't have been possible without these five key volunteers, or six, excuse me, that are here tonight to receive these awards. So, I really want to thank them at this point. Mayor, I don't know if you want them to come up one at a time, or as a group...
I think we can have them all come up, and Councilman Mills can present.
Thank you.
I can, I'll be Vanna White. Mike Siri.
Congratulations, Tyler, thank you very much.
Just stay up here. Bob DeSmeris.
Congratulations, Mike, thank you, sir.
Brian Funk.
Come on, Vanna.
Sorry.
Better be framed on the wall.
Scott Rule.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
And last but not least, Brian Archibald.
Thanks, Brian.
Photo up. Brian, did you want to say something? Are you gonna do?
I wasn't totally prepared to speak tonight, but I just would like to thank Josh Nderils and his staff, the Park Council, Park Board, and these guys, there's some kids, there's family who aren't here, who are as big as the rest of us, and, you know, we're really excited. The volume that has hit that trail system since we had the opening on Thursday has been, I mean, massive. Everybody I talked to who's there, there's several groups of people there at all times, there's little kids, there's parents, there's moms, there's dads, there's grandparents with their grandkids. So, we're super proud of our ability to be able to institute something that's all and come for everybody. It's not just the super guys who are big-time riders, it's really been, from the beginning, focused on this urban setting, and also, for kids and our community, our community to get kids more involved outside, who aren't necessarily ball-sport kids. So, we're super excited, we're even more excited to continue moving forward with the next couple phases. I said couple, you heard me right.
We know.
But we're certainly not willing to be done right now, and so, again, thank you, Mayor.
Don't break it.
Thank you.
And all the people here, the unions, everybody, I mean, the Park Board, it was just incredible. And then to see the people that went up and made it happen, to come with an idea and then make it come to fruition is really something exciting. And to see government and the public come together at once and for one purpose and to make it happen, I think you all should be proud of what you've done. So it's a tribute to Bristol, and as you said, I've talked to Scott out in the hallway a little bit, people are coming from outside the community now to come to Bristol, and they're spending time here after they ride with some of the amenities that we have in town. So it's a win-win situation, and again, everybody should be congratulated for what they did. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. The next section is announcements by council members. Do any council members have announcements for tonight, starting on my far left?
No. They want to just announce that they can leave if they want to.
Yeah, they can. No.
Oh, actually.
I think we should have made him stay till at least eight.
Okay. On September 19th, 2019, the Bristol Senior Center will be sponsoring a health and information fair with senior-related services. There'll be over 50 vendors, and they will offer a variety of screenings like flu shots, blood pressure readings, balance tests, and many more to mention. The event will be held from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Bristol Senior Center, and all are encouraged to attend. That's all I have.
Councilman Mills?
I have none.
I have one, Your Honor. There's a local nonprofit that's very dear to my heart. It's called the Bristol Education Foundation, and the mission of the foundation is to raise money from families and businesses in Bristol and in the greater Bristol area. And what they do is they raise this money and fund innovative programming in the schools that's not part of the daily curriculum, things that are brought forward to their attention by passionate teachers. And the foundation is having a trivia night on October 18th at the Doubletree, and I want to put it, I know it's early, we have another council meeting left before that, but I want to make everybody aware of it. Information could be found on the Bristol Education Foundation website, the Board of Education website, and I want to make a challenge. Maybe we can get some challenge matches going. Mayor, what do you think?
I came in second last time, but I'm still annoyed.
So please mark it on your calendars. It's a great cause for a great, a great community foundation. Thank you.
Councilman Cordier.
None for me. Thank you.
Councilman Han.
Yes, Your Honor. First, I'd like to mention that earlier today, at about 5:30, the election ballot lottery was conducted that determines the names, how they appear on the ballot. The Boys and Girl Scouts came in to learn about how elections are run, and they also took part by selecting the names. And the results are on the board out in the hall, if you're interested, so you can see how the ballot will look. Also, the Department of Public Works is bringing awareness to reduce, reuse, and recycle in the city of Bristol. And to do this, one of the things they're having is the first annual recycling poster contest. They want to make, reduce, reuse, and recycle a priority, and they're asking high school, middle school students to come up and promote through art. This is a poster contest, and we're going to have two winners in the 6th to 8th grade section and the 9th to 12th. They're going to be looking for creative posters illustrating reduce, reuse, and recycle from a student's point of view. They're accepting submissions until March 6th, and six winners are going to have their drawing on the side of a rubbish or recycle truck for one year. So whether you'd like to complete the posters in recess, inside as part of art class, or a competition at the school, they're looking to have a lot of submissions. So please tell your kids and your teachers to support this worthwhile effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly.
No, thank you.
Your Honor, can I have the floor again? Sorry. I think these might be some announcements that are necessary here. I'd like to mention that our summer in the city has never slowed down. It seems like every day we have new businesses opening and/or businesses trying to get the wheels turning. The importance of this factor is that business owners are wanting to call Bristol home and make it their destination. They feel confident that we offer, what we offer, and the assistance available to them. So some businesses I'd like to recognize that have recently been established are Good Friends Diner, Spar Gold, Physical Therapy, Tons Marketplace on Burlington Avenue, Rich Farms Ice Cream, Home Helpers of Central Connecticut, and Rods on the Gull celebrated a one-year anniversary. Please continue to support your local establishments. I'd like to also recognize our very own Stephen Bynum on receiving the 100 Men of Color Award. This award recognizes and honors 100 men throughout the state of Connecticut and Massachusetts for their contributions and service to their community. Stephen has been working in the city of Bristol for 13 years at Youth Services Department. He has been a critical part of our community, assisting our youth with guidance and leadership skills that are necessary for individual self-growth, and not to mention the countless hours he gives back volunteering in many ways. Stephen, we are honored to have you as part of our team and congratulate you on a job well done. There's, the Wreckin' Reed Library is officially open at Rockwell Park. Kids and adults can help themselves to free books. If you have used books at homes, please feel free to donate them at the Wreckin' Reed Station for others to enjoy. Stations are located at the park in designated areas. The other item is, we have a teen night social every Friday evening, starting on September 6th through November 1st. That's still going, right? Bristol Parks and Rec will be sponsoring a teen night social at the Page Park Pavilion. Anyone from the ages 13 to 17 are encouraged to attend. Please visit the website for a full schedule. Fees may apply based on activities. That's it. Sorry.
Okay. Good, thank you. I have one announcement that I'd like to do in the form of a motion, because I think everybody will be very happy to see it. I'd like to ask someone to make the motion to consider authorizing the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a real estate purchase agreement pertaining to parcel 10, Center Square Resubdivision, and to take any action as necessary.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Well, first you have to bring it onto the table.
Go ahead.
I move to bring the motion onto the table. The agenda?
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Councilwoman Cordier has the motion to execute the purchase and sales agreement for parcel 10, following all of the due diligence and following their letter of intent. We are now poised to do the purchase and sales execution, which means we will transact the financial and everything else pending the review by Corporation Council. But that came in today, so I thought it was important to bring on to the agenda for tonight. Councilman Cordier.
I hereby move that the mayor, Ellen A. Zappo-Sassu, or acting mayor, be authorized to represent the city and enter into a real estate purchase agreement to sell property known as parcel 10, area equal to 21,622 square feet, on a map entitled Resubdivision Map, Center Square Resubdivision, North Main Street, Riverside Avenue and Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, prepared for the city of Bristol, Malone and McBroom, 99 Realty Drive, Cheshire, Connecticut, 06410, project number 2235-62, date June 5, 2017, which map is recorded as map Q-304 of the Bristol Land Records. Said real estate purchase agreement shall name as buyers Wesley Seer and Oliver Wilson, which buyers have an address of 70 Oakwood Road, Harwinton, Connecticut, 06792. Said agreement shall be for the sum of $35,000. Said real estate purchase agreement shall be contingent upon review and approval by the Corporation Council or his designated assistant counsel. I hereby further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to sign and execute any other documents, including but not limited to a deed of conveyance, tax forms, title affidavit, and the like, as needed to effectuate the purposes of this transaction.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just quickly, we do have a lot of announcements and information that appear on the slideshow, and for our viewing public, they will be part of the broadcast that appears on Nutmeg TV. Also, Nutmeg TV is experimenting tonight with Facebook Live, so for those of you who are watching live from home, you could also watch via Facebook, and we'll see how that goes for the future. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have items 5A through K. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the consent calendar, items A through K.
Second.
Discussion, or anyone interested in removing an item for further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed? Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to reports and committee reports, the first item is 6A, which is an ordinance committee report for Section 17-18, Use of Streets.
Your Honor, the ordinance committee has made a referral to the council. I have a motion. I hereby move that Section 17-18, Use of Streets of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from this date or the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Your Honor, this is a technical thing. What we've done is we've added Hope Street, the new street within Center Square, to the ordinance. And I'd like to make a, I know some council members know this, but for the public, we may see this again. We're looking at this ordinance again as we speak. Councilman Kelly is working on this. Councilman Kelly, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, sure. Just a bit. Thank you, Councilman Proleski. I've called local restaurants just to try to get their feel on this and tweaking the ordinances, and the consensus thus far is most brick-and-mortar restaurant owners are very much in favor of tweaking the ordinances and making it a bit easier in some cases for some of these food trucks to do business, because it's really a growing trend. So as long as it's done properly, and it's a level playing field for everyone, the people I've spoken to in the restaurant business are all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 6B. Did we vote? Motion to approve?
Second.
We did. We have a second.
We do.
Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is there any other ordinance matters to come before?
No.
Okay. So do you have real estate?
There's nothing to report.
I'd like to bring a real estate item onto the table for consideration by the council via the Real Estate Committee in order to not lose any time. I'd like to suggest a referral to them to involve our city assessor in the acquisition and appraisal of the Shaffrick parcels, so that we can maybe get a feeling for what that value might be if we choose to go in the direction of acquiring additional open space.
You want a motion to refer?
Or we could act as a committee of the whole. I just don't want to lose any more time.
Well, that's fine.
Okay. So instead of a referral to real estate, we, as the city council, will be acting to make a motion to involve our city assessor in the appraisal of the parcels identified by the Shaffrick family along Perkins Street for potential inclusion and purchase to be added to the Hoppers Birch Pond Nature Preserve. Is everybody clear? We're just looking for some valuation expertise. So if somebody would like to make that in the form of a motion, A, first we're bringing that item onto the table.
Motion to bring that item to the table?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, a motion to have our city assessor deal with potentially making an appraisal valuation for those parcels.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, a motion to have our city assessor deal with potentially making an appraisal valuation for those parcels.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to 6B, which is the Memorial Boulevard Arts Magnet School update.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our last meeting of the committee was held on September 5th. The first round of costing out the project is now complete, and we are now tasked with making it fit into a budget. What we're doing is, we've met with the state of Connecticut, and some of the line item costs are more than what was initially budgeted. We do have contingencies to cover some of that, but the good news is that the state of Connecticut is increasing its reimbursement budget to the city to $63 million from $54 million. Now, the focus for the committee will be to redefine the scope and the dimensions of the building and make sure it works. And our next meeting will be held, I think, it's on every other Thursday, so in two weeks. And that's it, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. The update for 6C from the mayor's opioid task force is quick. We are continuing to work on our saves of public service announcements featuring Bristol families who have been addicted by the opioid crisis. We actually picked up three new families within the last two weeks, so the taping has been extended for another week, and I do plan on airing all of those PSAs that right now are in 59-second bites for appropriate use on social media at the October city council meeting, so everyone can see them. The other initiative that Chief Gould and I are working on in conjunction with Bristol Hospital, some of you may have heard of the Hope Initiative, which is working to reduce incarceration for those addicted with opioid issues. We are looking to expand that to do all recovery, including alcoholism, substance abuse that's non-opioid-related. So instead of using the Hope Initiative template here in town, the police department and the Bristol Health Organization has developed what's called COBRA, City of Bristol's Recovery Alliance. So with officer discretion, a person with an illegal substance on them or who is using a substance illegally can choose treatment instead of arrest. Community members who would like treatment for their substance misuse can also walk into the Bristol Police Department or the Bristol Emergency Room Department and request help at any time. So this goes a long way to the work of the mayor's task force on opioids to reduce stigma and also to couple that with recovery. Our recovery coach has been working through the state grant that we received last summer and is actually also working with a lot of our professional health entities. So right now, we're still designing that program. There's a meeting on Thursday, and there's all kinds of pieces that go to place with this, but I can't say enough about the fact that there continues to be a high level of collaboration amongst all the stakeholders in order to get these programs in place. So I look forward to having everyone see the PSAs in October. They're very powerful, and I think that hopefully if they can even reach some people and turn the corner from addiction into recovery, it's going to be a success. The next item on our agenda is the update regarding regional and interdepartmental cost savings and efficiencies. Yes, that's me. Often, I will just like to remind the council, since you're not in the building on a daily basis, about all of the good things that are happening, and I think that it's important for the public to know as well that their taxpayer dollars are being used efficiently. I also think it's important for them to know that we have such great synergy amongst a lot of the new department heads, as well as the ones who have been here for a long time who are now working with new partners, that that focus on collaboration is paying dividends. So quickly, I wanted to just highlight the fact that the Department of Public Works has really been the focal point for a lot of these. As Councilman Han mentioned earlier, we are incurring incredible costs with disposing of both solid waste and recyclables that we've never had to pay before. So the focus on reduction of use and things not coming into the transfer center, if they have other destinations, has been a key issue for the last year. So in conjunction with the Bristol Public Library, the Department of Public Works has spearheaded a shredding event, which is coming to the farmer's market on September 28th, and they've also been our host facility for all of the Public Works workshops that happened. So the library's been a great partner on that. They also benefited, the library also benefited from the Public Works book collection, because those are also heavy items that if we can take them out of the waste stream, that's very beneficial. And I do believe that a lot of those books actually went into our summer camp for Park and Rec as well. And both libraries now have rain barrels. The Water Department has also gotten into the act by funding and installing our water conservation units at many municipal buildings. There's one right outside, which is cutting down on the consumption of our plastic bottles here in the building, and they also gave us all of these great water bottles to use that say "Refill, Not Landfill." And they also gave us all of these great water bottles to use that say refill, not landfill. So we're already seeing on those fillable water stations that there's a digital count. So you can see how many plastic water bottles are not being used by people using these. So that's also something that's going toward our Silver Certification for Sustainable Connecticut. Sustainable Connecticut is important because it gets us extra points as we apply for state grants. The publicity with the Bristol Public Schools and Department of Public Works has been garnering a lot of attention recently because they've completed the last set of community gardens. So we've had great collaboration there as well with the Bristol Gardens, which are work of art. So we were doing that, and there are also Earth Day programs in all of the schools. In addition, speaking of the Board of Ed, which has just started their school year, the city loaned Eileen McNulty, who is our recently retired youth services director, who is working part-time on grants, to the Board of Ed to help write to grants for them that were under duress of a timeframe. So that collaboration happened as well. Public Works is also helping the parks with their new green team by supplying some gloves and garbage bags and prizes. And both the parks and the schools benefited from the sports equipment collection that then got repurposed into recesses and into the camp programs. The senior center recently hosted Plymouth Mayor Merchant to come in to talk about collaboration opportunities, as well as what the Bristol Senior Center does very well. And it's my hope that eventually we will be able to have some regional cooperations in the senior center services because we both have large populations. And the Bristol Burlington Health District recently made an offer to Plainville in terms of use for our dental clinic for a certain rate. And we're still providing building inspection services to Plainville for a fee. And this week, we were asked by Mayor Aaron Stewart to lend our community services supervisor to her and the city of New Britain to train their new community services staff, which we were happy to do. And later tonight, we're going to talk about my proposal to consolidate youth services in parks to better service those audiences. We've already reaped some benefits from those two departments talking closer together. And I believe the Best for Bristol Group was the sponsor of the teen night for this Friday. That is going to be covered by the grant funding that comes through Best for Bristol that aligns perfectly with what the park department is trying to do with that critical teen audience. So I'm looking forward to that event. The whole, oh, the whole series? Oh, I thought it was just this Friday night, even better. So that grant money is going to fulfill both missions, so that's great. So again, I just think it's important for all of us to know that there's all of these great collaborations, which while it inspires people to work together, leverage resources, and improve communication, it's also saving taxpayer dollars as well. The other one that I'd like to highlight at a future meeting is the continued consolidation between the Board of Education and the city for IT services. That has actually resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings, but we'll save that for another night. Now, I think we need to bring a salary committee report onto the table and add it to the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to bring a salary committee motion to the table for action.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Before I read our motion, I'd like to ask our superintendent of water to come up and give us a brief overview of what the intention is here.
Good evening, council members. Yes, we brought to you tonight through the salary committee. I thank them for their special meeting, some changes to our department. We recently have had some vacancies open. Some of our staff has chosen to move on to other utilities due to basically wages. It's really been a big differentiation between what some other utilities, especially the privates, are paying versus what we are. And we're trying to, meeting with the mayor and human resources, come up with a way that we can retain some of our best employees that we have. And with that, you're seeing the creation of a new position, which will lighten the load for some of our other staff, but also give us an additional resource to cut down on future overtime. Right now, we are going to have three out of five of our operators that run our plant available. We're losing two, and we could potentially lose another at any time. With that, it has them running shifts of, you know, sixteen hours a day, which is very unhealthy. So this new position will also give us the opportunity to have a floater to fill those overtime, as well as moving our chief operator to more of a managerial role. They are the operators overseeing the water coming out of that plant with operators underneath them. And with that, we have looked at to increase the pay for some of our existing operators once they achieve state certification. Once you're a state-certified operator, it's a very highly desirable person. And we actually have people, you know, I'll use the word poaching, some of our employees. And, you know, we want to keep the best employees we can here in Bristol. And this is a major step to do that.
Any questions?
I do. So what's a general range of what we're paying versus what somebody could go to another community or a quasi-public water department?
Well, I'll use an example of one of our employees that just left is looking at anywhere about an eighteen dollar an hour raise.
Per hour?
Per hour, for a very equal position and no weekends. Where currently, they're working weekends here in Christmas and New Year's and every holiday. So we know it's, it's getting very lucrative on some ends. And that's, you know, they're highly desired candidates, once they have that class four license. So what the step we're looking for tonight with the salary committee is to bridge it a little bit. We know it's going to take a lot of work to get to that common ground. But this is a great step, if approved, to get us a little closer.
And can you remind us that this does not have an impact on the city's general fund budget?
Yes, the most important fact, this is not funded by the city. It comes out of our budget, and so it has no impact on the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent?
Do you have a motion?
I do. Motion to approve the creation of a new position of water treatment operator slash maintenance technician, Local thirteen thirty-eight code seven, twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents an hour to twenty-five dollars and nine cents an hour. And to approve an upgrade of the position of water treatment plant operator, Local thirteen thirty-eight code six, twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents an hour to twenty-three dollars and seventy cents an hour to a code seven, twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents an hour to twenty-five dollars and nine cents an hour. And to approve an upgrade of the position of water treatment plant operator, class three, Local thirteen thirty-eight code seven, twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents an hour to twenty-five dollars and nine cents an hour to a code eight, twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents per hour to twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents per hour. And to approve an upgrade of the position of water treatment plant operator, class four, Local thirteen thirty-eight code eight, twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents an hour to twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour to code nine, twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents an hour to twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents an hour. And lastly, to approve the transfer of the position of chief water treatment plant operator from Local thirteen thirty-eight code ten, twenty-six dollars and eight cents an hour to twenty-nine dollars, ten cents an hour to the BPSA bargaining unit at salary level seven, sixty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars to eighty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars annually, all effective September twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. And to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, your honor. In, in sitting in the meeting, there was some discussion about, obviously, being able to bring the salary up at this point. And Mr. Longo also talked about the benefits of the other end. And the problem is, I mean, we have a very good retirement system here. But I guess what's happened is that people aren't reaching that. They're, they're not seeing that as a perk at this point because they're leaving, obviously, prior to that. So it is a fine line, and I know that Mark, the gentleman, that's personnel, is looking into, trying to balance everything out. And Mr. Longo gave a very good dissertation as to why we needed these, these particular raises.
It doesn't make any sense to train and invest in employees in order to have them go to greener pastures. Does anybody else have any comments? Did BPSA have an opportunity to review the job descriptions?
I just had a question. I'm assuming the majority of people that are leaving are younger people, and it was touched on, that really aren't thinking in terms of retirement. So that's not an inherent benefit to them?
Not necessarily. It's not age.
Oh, it's not?
It's more, we've had some personnel that have come to us. They're spending four or five years, and they're actually being offered a lot more money elsewhere. So at that point, they're not vested into the pension system, et cetera, ten years. So, and some of it's their second career. Or the latest employee that's leaving has worked in other water utilities. So it's, it's, it's not age relevant. It's, you know.
How many do you think you've lost over the last couple of years?
We've lost three chief operators, and we've lost four other operators in the past ten years. We've lost three chief operators in the past five years.
And that's what's forcing the double shift, the mandatory double shifts?
It is.
The sixteen-hour shift?
And it's not mandatory, it's voluntary, but it is, it's, we're down, we've had this two years ago where we were down to two operators, and they were working sixteen hours a day, seven, almost seven days a week, two people, to cover it. We bring in other staff when we can, but they're not qualified. They're not working up there daily. And this is our, our water we're dealing with. This is not, so.
Any other questions?
Yes, have you looked at the, the cost of replacing a person compared to the increase that you're asking for? My understanding is it's a lot more expensive to lose someone, train someone new, pay for the overtime of somebody to cover while that's happening, and also the expense of, of actually finding somebody. Have we looked at that?
We have not looked at it in that nature. We did conduct interviews this week, of, we had thirteen interviews for a candidate. I'm sure there's, there's a good analysis on it, and that's, that's really in the HR department more than it is us. But you are absolutely right. We are spending time training employees and going through it, and it's costly every time we do it.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, thank you.
And I love the water bottles. Thank you.
All right, I believe we need to vote on this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other committee reports, starting on my far, oh, do you have more for some other committee?
No, I have another committee.
Okay, well then, we'll start, we'll stay with Councilman Fortier for additional committee reports.
I have one more committee report. From the Disability Commission. First of all, I want to report that our webpage on the city's website is updated. And I would encourage folks to check that out because we have lots and lots of information there. Regularly, we have members of the disability community attend our meetings, and we sponsor speakers to come in and discuss the various services and programs available to folks with disabilities in Bristol and the surrounding area. And every October, we invite the registrar voters. In addition to bringing sample ballots, they show us various ways the voting process can be accommodated for people with disabilities. And it's always one of our most well-attended and favorite meetings of the year. And this year, we plan to expand our October meeting, which will be Wednesday, October ninth, to have an open house to highlight the Disability Commission and all the resources available to Bristol folks. And I want to extend an invitation particularly to the mayor because the commission, I think, focused on her as being our most important invite for that. But for all my fellow council people and the members of the public, both here in the room and anyone watching, that meeting will be October ninth. It is at seven o'clock, and we do meet right here off the council chambers in the first floor meeting room. And it promises to be a lot of information that I think will surprise you about how many services we have for disabled folks in Bristol.
And I will likewise challenge you to make sure that they invite the special education PTO, which is where I was before this meeting, which is also interested in collaborating with the commission. And I, while I was there, told them that you or Mr. McCary and our park superintendent would be great guest speakers for their future meetings as well.
Thank you. And we've had, we've actually had Dr. Dieter, who had been our special ed director for the Board of Ed, has been one of our speakers. So I didn't, wasn't aware that there was a special ed PTO, so we will enjoy meeting with them. Thanks.
Thank you. Continuing that way, Councilman Han, do you have any committee reports?
I have one item, your, your honor. Next week is the MUM Festival, and the Arts and Culture Commission has, has helped to sponsor the MUM Festival Committee and their efforts. And I just wanted to bring everybody's attention that it starts next Thursday. And I want to congratulate the MUM Festival Committee on all their hard work.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly, do you have any committee reports?
Yes, I do. School readiness, and on August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, the School Readiness Council held its annual conference for early care and educational professionals. And the two-day event brought one hundred and seventy-five people in attendance. And the OEC Commissioner Beth By gave the keynote speech. And Dr. Peg Olivera of the Gazelle Institute in Yale University conducted a workshop on the foundations of child development. There were other relevant workshops given as well. And there's two upcoming events later in September. The first, though, actually, they're both at the Public, Bristol Public Library. And the first one is for licensed and faith-based schools in partnership with the Office of Early Childhood Education, Emergency Management Department, and the Police and Fire Department. And this is going to focus on emergency preparedness for early childhood programs. Because as of now, this is now required for any licensed program. And the second event is on the twenty-sixth. This is in the evening, from five-thirty to six-thirty. And it's a presentation for parents and teachers. Tad Talks, and it's going to be chaired by Dr. Tad Bartels. And he will be talking about how screen time affects children's vision and brain development. And I think that also affects adults as well, but that's another story. And childcare and dinner will be provided. Registration is required. If you called the library, they can pre-register you. Thank you.
Councilman Proleski, any other committee reports?
No, thank you.
Councilman Mills?
None.
Councilman Rosado?
All set, thank you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. I did add the closure of the Superior Court onto the agenda just to keep everybody apprised of what's happening over there. The Director of Public Works has been supervising it with his staff. And they did leave us some items. We are the proud recipients of some lobby benches, some L-shaped desks, several file shelf units, and some metal shelving. And I know that the Emergency Management Director has already asked for some of that to be used within his storage room. We are currently not using the court space. The state has contracted with a vendor for the demolition and removal of the judges' stands and the jury boxes and additional benches that are going to be removed sometime in October. Meanwhile, we are having an internal conversation with staff to kind of dust off some of those reports that were done about what needs to happen here in this building in terms of mechanical repairs and everything else that has been talked about for many years. And it is our hope that eventually we could come up with a plan, which potentially may include using the court space as flex space in order to get some of those repairs scheduled. So it's still in-house in terms of our professional staff, and it eventually will work its way here. And we'll have some committee input and probably some discussions, especially in terms of the capital projects and the financial commitment that that will require. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Moving on to new business. I do have on the agenda the proposal that I've made to reorganize youth services into the Parks and Recreation Department. This is still under review by both Parks Commission from an informational standpoint and from the Youth Services Commission from an informational standpoint. Human Resources has weighed in. And Dr. Maderos, who is the park superintendent, is who I am proposing to oversee both departments. I thought I made copies, but I didn't. So I'm going to pass around a chart that has been created that shows in red currently vacant positions, as well as the synergy of where we would be realigning. What would happen, in essence, for our viewing audience who can't see this, is we would have one department head, which would save us that salary. That would be, that was Eileen McNulty, who retired in June. And we would have four divisions, adding a youth and family services division to the existing three divisions within the Park and Recreation Department, which are Parks, Grounds, Facilities Division, which is largely untouched by this reorganization, the aquatics division for the three pools, largely untouched by this, and then the Recreation Division, which would absorb the Pine Lake Challenge Course under their, their column, and would have one of the youth employees in an administrative support position come and be the administrative support for Parks and Rec Recreation Division. Likewise, we would then bring the youth and family services Likewise, we would then bring the Youth and Family Services Division under the umbrella of Parks and Rec. There would be a new division supervisor, so that would be a created position. We are assuming that there may be need for a part-time or a backfill position for administrative youth support workers, and that the existing admin support for youth and family services would stay within that category as well. At the top, we would be looking for a part-time customer experience marketing coordinator, about 25 hours a week. And we would be adding a new position, the Deputy Superintendent of Parks, Recreation, Youth and Family Services. So this being said, that reorganization, when you take the former director's salary, still nets us a $54,000 savings. But we've now had an additional item come to the table that, in all of the community discussions that we've had about what the youth services, as well as parks, what that mission looks like. The Parent and Child Center has come to the table, a group that is affiliated with Bristol Health that is vacating their offices on Parks Prospect Street. They are interested in renting 51 High Street. We are interested in renting to them, which would now mean that we would add some additional revenue on to the city books because we have one renter there already. As many of you know, there is a paying specialist there, Doctors Pesci and Beck, that have been there for many years that pay rent. We would now add Bristol Health as a rental. And we would most likely relocate at least the Recreation Division back to City Hall. So the outdoor adventure coordinator and some admin support would come back and free up some space. And at that point, we have not set on a rental term. I think that that needs to be handled by the Real Estate Committee and the Corporation Counsel's Office. So what I wanted to do tonight is just talk about some of how I believe that these missions align. And I think that as we continually look for cost efficiencies, as well as how to best provide services, I think that this really works. I've been very impressed with the work of the Park Superintendent and meeting with all staff, especially the ones that are the clinical side. It's not known to many people that the Youth Services Department provides family and individual counseling for students. Many referrals come through the Bristol Public Schools. We have the Juvenile Review Diversion Program, as well as the Drug-Free Communities Grant. So there's a lot going on, and I think that it aligns perfectly with what we're trying to do with Parks and Rec, and really, obviously, leverage resources at the same time. I know that Dr. Maderos is here. I don't know if he wanted to add anything to what he's done to date. But at this point, we need three motions. One, I need a referral to the Salary Committee for discussion and review of these positions and this new organizational chart. I also need a motion referral to the Building Committee because we have 51 High Street considerations to be discussed. And I need a referral to the Real Estate Committee for a potential lease with Bristol Health for 51 High Street. I can't make motions.
Well, I'll throw out three different ones.
I don't care.
You can make a motion. Sure.
I'll make a motion to refer the Salary Committee issues to the Salary Committee?
Second.
Discussion on the referral to the Salary Committee for the organizational chart. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to come?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to refer to the Real Estate Committee any leasing considerations for the property on High Street. Was it 51 High Street?
And maybe to involve the Corporation Counsel's Office?
And with, in conjunction with the Corporation Counsel's Office.
And I'll second that motion.
Discussion on the motion for the referral to the Real Estate Committee?
Should anything go to Building?
That's coming next.
Okay.
You're going to make that. All in favor of the referral to the Real Estate Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there another motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we send this motion, send this proposal to the Building Committee for their consideration.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. And it would be my intention that at the Building Committee, the Park Superintendent would present to you what he sees the new layout, being probably of both facilities, what's going to come back here at City Hall and what would happen at 51 High Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, just in order to be clear. Sure.
Just a referral to the Planning Commission pursuant to 8-24.
For a lease?
Rental, for the real estate matter.
For a lease?
Even though it's not being sold?
Right.
Okay, so would somebody be so kind as to make a referral for 8-24 purposes to the Planning Commission?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Attorney Clift has just ruined my timeline. So I believe that the Building Committee and the Real Estate Committee meet on the 17th. The Salary Committee is scheduled for the 18th. When the heck is planning meeting? At the end of, when do they meet? The fourth Wednesday of the month? Okay. And then it would be my hope that without any type of major wrenches thrown in, that we may be able to come back on October 8th, and bless some of this. We need to plan for physically moving people. We need to figure out what's needed in that. We need to do some client referral information, let people know what we're doing. And there are some issues within City Hall itself that need to be handled in order to be ready to have new staff come back here. So that's some of that. Does anybody have any question? Wait, did we vote on 8-24?
No.
Okay, let's vote on 8-24. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, now that you've all heard this, I'm going to get you the organizational chart via email. But does anybody have any thoughts or concerns or questions?
I have one, Your Honor. In terms of the clinical services, is the vision that they would stay at 51 High Street? Okay.
At this time, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for hearing out that proposal without having the chart in front of you. I'll pass it around right now amongst all of us, for those of you who are interested. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn the agenda over to our Town and City Clerk for the remaining items.
Well, the resignation, as we all know, was earlier, and it was Donald Gorinson from the Board of Fire Commissioners. Motion to send a thank-you note to Commissioner Gorinson.
You gave him a helmet. I don't know if he needs a thank-you.
I know. Well, just saying. That's the standard. We still need to acknowledge him.
Motion has been made and seconded to send a letter of thanks to Commissioner Gorinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to appointments, there are a few. The first is, we are going to be forming a task force to review the RFPs that have come in for the Sessions Building on Riverside Avenue. We're very excited that we actually had several come back. And so I'd like to ask the council to make the motion to appoint the following people to be evaluating those RFPs. The first is Robert Passamano, representing the BDA, Marie O'Brien, representing the Board of Finance, Tom Hislop, representing the 10-year Strategic Planning Capital Improvement Committee, Bill Masetti, who is a recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce, Michael Mazzarelli, who serves on the Zoning Commission, and I will be serving as an ex officio member.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you have something you wanted to say? Inland Wetlands Commission, which is a mayor's appointment not requiring a confirming vote, is to reappoint Daniel Massaro Jr. as an alternate member for a three-year term to September of 2022. The next one is Housing Code Appeals Board to appoint Aaron Thibodeau to replace Marian Erickson, which was a resignation, unexpired term to December 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Fire Commissioners to appoint Hal Kilby to replace Don Gorinson, retired, unexpired term to January of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, to reappoint Attorney Richard Lacy for a five-year term to September of 2024.
So moved.
Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Second.
Any, someone has to have discussion. How many years has this been? Will this be? Seventy-eight. So maybe you'll get a fire helmet upon the time of end. There's been a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Here's to the next five years, Attorney Lacy. Currently, we have two vacancies that need to be filled by a member of the Republican Party or an unaffiliated voter for the Building Code Board of Appeals. I have a vacancy on the Bristol Historic District Commission. And that's it for this month. Thank you. Okay, Teresa?
And now to the addenda. There's a resolution regarding approval to file grant application for $13,500 with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for federal fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant, and to authorize the mayor, or acting mayor, to execute any and all documents necessary. And there is a resolution to read?
I can read that, Your Honor. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application for $13,500 to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the federal fiscal year 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant funding is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Alan A. Zapo-Sasu, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to enter into, deliver, and execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application/grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of this application/grant, be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. Roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Mayor votes yes. The motion is approved.
And now the executive sessions. Executive session to discuss possible claims in the matter of the synthetic fields at Bristol Eastern High School and Bristol Central High School. And the second executive session is to discuss the matter of Creative Communities Builders Limited, Lot 35B, Lake Avenue.
Okay. And will you please tell us who will be joining us?
Yes. Well, first of all, I'd like to take them out of order. I'd like to take the one having to do with Creative Communities, because that'll be fairly quickly. That'll just be Attorney Steig and myself.
Okay.
Excuse me. On the second one, it'll be Attorney Lacy and Chris Casson, the Athletic Director from the Board of Ed, and myself.
Okay, so do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, we adjourned, and we will be returning shortly. Okay, let the record show that there have been no votes taken in executive session. Are there any motions to come before the council?
I have one motion, Your Honor. I hereby move that the City of Bristol purchased the real property known as Map 5, Lot 35B, Lake Avenue, from Creative Communities Builders for the purchase price of $2,451.43. I hereby further move that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to sign and execute any documentation to effectuate this transaction.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the council?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Bristol's Farmers Market has been a staple of the Bristol community for several years. The season will begin in June and run through October. Products range from farm-fresh vegetables, fruits and products from local farms, to homemade beef jerky, to baked goods, coffee, maple syrup, and other locally-made treats. One of the original farm vendors, Gressik Farms, will be returning again to the Bristol Farmers Market. We recently spoke with Henry Gressik about his family's farm and his participation at Bristol's Farmers Market.
I enjoy participating in the Bristol Farmers Market because I get to connect with the end user of the products that we grow. Seeing the end user and sending them away happy with something that I grew inspires me to continue on farming with my family.
For more information on Bristol's Farmers Market, you can find us on all social media platforms and at www.bristolallheart.com.